Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Dalton Select Board of Order. All those able, please stand up. Mr. Boyle?
Yes, thank you, Mark. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands in our hands, and to the free and equal opportunity of all.
Please note, this speech is being recorded by Zoom for purposes of taking minutes at Dalton Cable TV. Okay, would you do well call, please?
Want me to do it?
Yeah.
All right, Dan Esco.
He's rescued.
John Boyle.
Yes.
Bob Bishop.
Here.
Anthony Heckneer.
I'm here.
Oh my God.
I'm here.
No one's been there.
Bags.
Bags, yes.
I'm here.
Mark Stow.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the minutes from September 8th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of September 8th, 2025 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made in second, is there any further corrections or comments? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I swing the.
I stand. I stand. I will say.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of October 14th, 2025 be accepted, be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made in seconds, is there any further corrections or comments? All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
And votes? Public address the board. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda, or any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on comment on an item listed on the meeting agenda, please do so at this time, as we will not be taking comments from the audience when the item comes up for board discussion. The public address their board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each individual given out of three minutes, we intend on addressing the board we ask to do the following. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. Please step up to the podium and speak into the microphone. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company slash institution you represent. Please address your comments to the board chair. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair doesn't need may answer questions on procedural matters. Is anyone that would like to speak at this point? Jim Ball.
Jim Ball, this is Teneride Drive, Mr. Chairman. On the third announcement on the agenda, says there's an opening for two board members for the board house. I think there's only one opening.
No, wait. Thank you. David, do you want to make one, too?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to talk. I am David Martin Dell. I wish to address you as a taxpayer, not as a member of the Public Safety Advisory Committee. I want to talk about the public safety building and its location. The town has expressed twice that the neighborhood wants first street location, Ron Senior Senator for the youth says how old the neighborhood is. I believe it is disrespectful to continue to make effort to use that parcel for a police station. If you want to use it for a police station, get a new consensus forward. If we're going to push forward with a new police station, the taxpayers need to know and understand what that project will cost. A new building will cost in the neighborhood of $1,000 a square foot to build. The present program is focused on a 12,000 square foot building, adding the salt cost, and if it's still focused down Fields Street, water remediation costs. We are knocking out a $15 million project. What is the impact of a $15 million project on our taxes? This number needs to be out in the open. Car for the worst maybe. If the taxpayers do not support a $15 million project, the location zone, it's all wasted time and effort. If we're going to build on private land, you're probably adding a million or two, you're still knocking out a $15 million project. Alternate plan, renovate the town hall, benefit all departments in town. Few people in the town are aware that there are 5,000 square feet on the third floors level above the town offices in the town hall. This space is under the roof of the town hall. We already own it. You will never find cheaper space or more affordable space. Of course, we're going to need to add an elevator. The ADA requirements have been in place for like 34 years, and we still only have the access presently. There are all kinds of things we could do. If, if we were to build a new police station, we're looking at, at a bare minimum of two years before we can build a station. Lennox is completing theirs, they just had their grand opening. They started their process of building a new police station in 2017. So what are we doing in the interim for the next couple of years if we were to build a new police station? What are we doing to take care of the rest of the town and access it to town hall? Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes. Hi, Jeannie Ingram, 109 Lennon Avenue. I just kind of wanted to piggyback off what Dave is saying about the town meeting having voted twice now to retain the nature of this neighborhood by turning the first street field into residential housing rather than a public safety complex, which many of us in the neighborhood believe any public safety complex should be on a major thoroughfare, not in a residential neighborhood. I don't know why we keep focusing on this without thinking about some of the other options that are on a made thoroughfare, but there is not a lot of public support for this location. So if we continue to go down this path, I just think we're going to find ourselves in a moment of tension with this neighborhood and with people beyond the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Okay, this leads to your appointments, Mr. Boyle.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Shannon P. be appointed to constantly eating CLA as a advance that I have effective November 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconds, is there any further comments?
Is this a retroactive or blinder?
Yes, yes, it would be a retro.
Okay, she did start.
Okay, she started, okay.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
And votes? It is Shannon here, congratulations. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Morgan McDonald be appointed as interim emergency management director effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made in seconds, is there any further discussion?
Chairman, are you going to head the new town manager, post this to her permanent position?
It is already posted.
It is already posted. Any other questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
And votes? Okay. The opening of sealed bids became the parcel land located off North Street. Mr. Williams.
Okay, so we have four bids, and they're sealed, and I'm going to open them one at a time, and I'm going to then report each one of them and pass the paperwork to the select board and let them deliberate for the final decision that they will, they have to make. So I'm doing this alphabetically, by the way, and the first bid is from Thomas and Esther Ballardini, and they are bidding $31,500, and they have given us a check for 10% of that figure, which is a requirement of $3,150. We'll move on to the second bid. Notice I saw this implement of destruction tonight. Okay, the second bid is from Brian Cooper. Brian Cooper is putting in a bid of $51,000. Brian D. Cooper, $51,000, and I have a cashier's check here for $5,100. Okay, the next bid is from Dickens Crane. Dickens Crane from Holiday Farm. Okay, Dickens has a bid of $51,510, and he has submitted a check with that of $5,151. This is the final bid, it's from Jeffrey Dusziak. He is a Pittsfield resident. Okay, Mr. Dusziak is putting forward a bid of $30,000, and he has submitted a check for 10% of that, which is $3,000. I will now relay these letters and checks to the select board. They may review the documentation we have here to be sure it's complying.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion upon support.
Mr. Chairman, some of these figures are present, but money isn't everything. We've worked 16 years despite this property being a tax title, the Bardin property. There are multiple parcels, I don't know, maybe five or six, totaling, for a total of, I don't know, 116, 170 acres, and we have sold up, been pardoned through the APA process, and we realized this on about $150 million. There remains though one parcel, this is what's called the Bardin parcel, that doesn't have an APR attached to it, and this is why we are auctioning it up tonight. Now, the first five or six parcels, this property is on North Mountain, as you run Route 9 on the left. I'm sure you all know where it is. It's all called North Mountain. 99% of the property up there is already purchased from the town by the Ballardini family. They have been great stewards of the land, which is what Mass Jesus Department of Agriculture looks for. They look for an agricultural development project plan, which the Ballardini family have already submitted, they bought the first parcel with the APR attached. Other reasons why I would figure the Ballardini family has submitted an agricultural development plan to Mass Di, Mass Di, that's Mass Jesus Department of Agriculture. We are hopeful they will extend it and remaining nine acres. Third, the site is accessible only through owned already by the Ballardini family, and that easement right away is kind of sketchy. It's not clear how it was legally determined, they wanted an actual license, so that's a legal issue. I can't help but feel that. Fourth, the Ballardini family has been gracious enough to allow hunters to hunt their land, the hunters, 48 acres that they control, and allow people to transfer first their property to reach other property to hunt up there, which is maybe not always a hunters, because it is a very strong local hobby in fast time. And of course, they always have to get permission before they allow people to use it. So I think that the whole parcel is even intact on North Mountain, which by the way has a very big history in the town of Dalton, because there used to be settlements up there and things of that nature. But anyway, it's my position that this property, that marshals should all stay in one tract. So as a result of that, I'm going to move that the award of this bid be awarded to the Ballardini family.
How does the town agree in the favor?
That we, I'm making judgment that's in the best interest of the town, and I think for the reasons I stated, this is in the best interest of the town.
Anyone else on board?
I'll agree with John, pretty much everything he said, and I'd second that motion.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else?
I do. John, I appreciate your remarks, and it sounds like you've done a lot of homework.
Yeah, and we wrestled for this thing for 16 years, 2009, when the Bardins lost two property taxes. And as you, well, some people know, there has been one entitlement after another. The biggest indictment was taken by the Mass Department of Agriculture, because they never hear this clear information to sell it, in spite of the fact, in spite of the fact they own the hill.
Well, in any event, I thought this would be an easy decision in the sense that the highest bidder would be the one who would award this to. And to be honest, I'm still of that mind. No hard feelings or disrespect to the Ballardinis, and I'm not aware of the history, grateful to hear that they've been good neighbors to the town, but I also know that Dickens Crane is a longtime family. He has property in that area, too. I can imagine that, I would hope that he would also be a good steward, as you mentioned. So again, getting back to my original premise, I thought we'd go with the highest bidder, and I believe both bidders would do well by this property, so in all deference, I support the highest bid.
I have to support the Ballardinis just because I want to keep that whole track and land together. I think it makes sense. The only reason this came up, there was going to be a park at one time, and the town carved it out of there, and otherwise it would have been sold all the different, so then the town backed off for making it a park because it was going to cost a national buck to do it. So this might make sense. Okay, so the motion has been made in second, is there any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Votes?
Aye.
I'll take three to one. And award it to the Ballardinis. Okay, number eight, the proper head presentation. Yes.
Good evening. Not 100% sure what we're, what the whole intent of this is, but I just figured I would take the opportunity to present, present to the board on some of the stuff that's been going on. I've been here as the department, in the Department of Buildings and Grounds for two years now, so kind of getting to know the lay of the land in Dalton and municipal world. That's been a little learning curve for me. But just talk about some of the things that I've been doing lately, working on some ADA stuff. We got the grant for the countertops in town hall that, that was paid for by someone else, but I was in with my new assistant, installed those. We're also working on, we put up some automatic doors in the library. Other stuff ADA related is not as good news. The lift, the lift refurbishment in town hall, we've kind of run into a snag. Trying to get some more concrete answers out of Hill Engineering on what's going on there right now. The long and short of it is, the new platform that Garaventa wants to put on to the existing framework and rails that are already installed in town hall weighs approximately 200 pounds more than the old one, and in order to sign off on it, we had to get Hill to come in, Hill Engineering to come in and stamp it to okay that extra weight on the structure, and they're hesitant on doing that right now. I'm not 100% sure where we're going to land on that. It's my hope that we can get that resolved. Still waiting to hear back from Hill on their kind of final analysis on this, but right now it's looking like they don't want to put their stamp on those plans as they are. Moving forward from there, we would be looking at a complete, maybe redesign of the whole lift structure, to which my previous quote from Garaventa was going to be just north of $100,000. Right now, we have $68,000 appropriated for it, so I'm hoping to have some more answers on that soon, but it's getting a little, little hairy there. So I'm not 100% sure we're going to end up there. Other than that, you know, getting ready for the cold weather. There were a couple flakes coming down tonight. You know, get prepared for that. We got the, in that vein, signed a contract to get the new gutters put on town hall. Unfortunately, they were booked up into December, so we're still waiting on that, but we're hoping that that does alleviate some of the issues in the basement there. As you know, we had the indoor air quality assessment done in the basement. One of the things I do want to address is the carbon dioxide levels, especially in the dispatch office. Really need to get something done in the terms of ventilation now, in ERV system. As it is now, I don't have money in my budget to fund that type of a project. Require some engineering to make sure we're up to ASHRAE standards and all that, for the usage of the building and the square footage and all that, and then installation of the system. If I was to ballpark a number, I think we could get that done, you know, something like the 70s, all range, you know, if I was to just kind of wing a number at it, it's one of the numbers we're talking about there, but I need some kind of direction in hand or figure out a way how to fund a project like that. So that's kind of where we're at there. The others that came up with the hot water in the police station, we attempted a fix that hasn't quite worked out right, but the real truth that we need to do is have a recirculation line installed, which would run the whole length of the town hall to get hot water all the way to the other end of the building, and then shorter runs off, as is now with one hot water heater in the basement and boiler room.
How big is that hot water heater?
It's a 50 gallon.
Is that a normal size for?
Yeah, we don't have, we're not running any showers and stuff like that. The, it pumps out hot water. It's just, it's going to go 75, 100 feet down the other end of the building before, you know, so I think by code technically, we should have a recirculation line installed there. I'm going to work up, I started doing some work this week on that, mapping out exactly where the lines are running so I can put together an RFP, because we're going to have to get, probably put that up to bed, get that installed soon later.
Would it make more sense to put in another hot water heater closer?
Maybe, I'm not sure where we would put it. I've thought about it, but I haven't quite got down that road yet, but there, I mean, there are options of maybe, you know, indirect kind of on demand, I mean, heater down then in the building might help, but there's still, it's not just the police bathroom, it's beyond that, there's the dispatch bathroom, and then the bathroom on the far end in the accounting office up there that are all connected over there, so it's something worth looking into, but I think, you know, as the system is designed right now, the recirculation line is probably in the way to go, but we might, depending on what the prices on that come in, you know, we can look into that.
Yeah, well, the hot water heater, is that, is that hot water on the boiler or is it separate?
It's a separate boiler, it's gas, gas power.
Is it gas fired? That was my second question, thank you.
Yep. So that was, yeah, that was kind of the, you know, the big red flag in the indoor air quality assessment that we did. And, I suppose we got, yeah, just also, you know, now that it's getting cold again, working on the heating system, trying to balance that thing a little better, and, you know, I've got some heat in the end of his office, checking in one of these colder mornings, and see how it holds up as we get into deep freeze, but we are, you know, making some progress there. Just, yeah, just some other general stuff. As far as, you know, my office, I had my assistant now since spring top last year, Corey's working out great. He's taken a lot of the load with some of the more mundane stuff, like winding the clock, you know, all those things off my plate, and so I can focus on some of these bigger picture things. Looking forward to having him here this winter, too, as it's always in check, just getting all the snow cleared, you know, around these buildings here. So that'll be, he'll be a big help this winter. Yeah, just other stuff. Yep, working on, I took in the first class for the public contracting overview a while back, taking the second class through the state on design and construction contracting to get certified in procurement, and also keeping up on, you know, some of the safety committee stuff, classes evolved there. That's about it.
Any questions for Jeff?
I just have one, Jeff. In any investigation or research due for town hall in terms of energy upgrades, the Green Committee would be of value because we are a Green community, there is grant money.
Yep.
Towards renovation of town properties, as we're hopefully going to be doing there this year.
Yeah, that's the other thing I forgot to mention, is working with Dave on the project here, and I think maybe, I don't know if we'll get into it for this cycle, but for next year, I definitely want to look at that gas boiler in the library, because that thing's, it's, it's running, it'll be running for a little while, but it's, you know, it's not getting any newer down there, that's for sure, so that's another thing we should definitely be looking at.
Jeff?
Yep.
You said it's not getting any newer down there. The town hall is not, building is not getting any newer either. Do you think, this is crazy, but do you think that building actually has a future, has an office building?
I do. I think it would take some work and some money. I think it would, a lot of the things that I would like to see happen there, like an elevator, and sort of a, you know, if the police station was to find a new hall, it would give us the opportunity to kind of do a major retrofit of the basement and be able to use that space. It's, you know, it's not ideal, but if we were to be able to really do a real renovation down there, you know, and then we could, there's a spot where I can foresee an elevator, you know, but while the police station's there, that's those, that's not really an option, so, you know, like I said, getting this lift up and running will be a step in the right direction, but ideally, you know, we should get an elevator in there. It's just hard to do, you know, as the building is being used right now, because we're It is where we're packed, you know, packed in there right now. There's really no free space anywhere.
Thank you. Very informed, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Number nine, acceptance of 2026 LRS grant.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, I'm a dollar accept. I haven't read this yet. This is the first of the steps. Let me think it together. It is also, I don't think we have it. It's pretty long. That's why you call us in advance, it's like 100 basis. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept a grant, MRS grant, in the amount of $19,312.
Second. Most have been made in seconds. Is there any further comments or questions?
Thank you, Lori.
Chief, can you tell us what this is for?
This is the traffic safety grant that we apply for annually through the state. It helps give us money for specific traffic enforcement, pedestrian enforcement. We did lose funding for our bike rodeo for next year, so we're really sad about that. They denied that for this year or coming up next year. So we're really kind of bummed about that. But we're able to do impaired operation enforcement, speeding, crosswalk enforcement, things like that, and it just pays the overtime for officers to do that specific enforcement.
Thank you. Most have been made in seconds. Is there any further comments? All those in favor? Okay. There's quite a bit of controversy surrounding the SNAP benefits. I know the state's bound to pay, but we need to have the federal government, you know? So we, as a select board, are writing our representatives to put pressure on our elected representatives to get the SNAP dollars back in place.
Mr. Chairman, Governor Regalor?
Yes.
Okay, this is Representative Davis from the Pittsburgh District, our rep in the state's, Dear Representative Davis, now that the Trump administration has said it will pay 50% of staff benefits for the month of November, I am reaching out to urge you to work with your colleagues and the governor to find a way to pay the other 50%. It is vital, it is a vital lifeline for the one in six Massachusetts residents who rely on the monthly support of the rich people themselves and their families. In addition, food retailers rely heavily on these SNAP dollars that are spent in your stores statewide. 20% of the grocery store revenue comes from SNAP funds. A loss of half of these dollars will be devastating for retailers, their employees, and our economy. A loss of even some of the benefits is a hardship for SNAP recipients. And that will do withstand and the emergency food system. Already stretched thin before this busy holiday season, can't make up the difference. Please find a way to utilize state resources to help make staff benefit whole this month. This is zero. The board is like, make a decision.
Okay. I got approved first. I got put on, so we can just, okay.
My second approval letter.
Okay. And this all for all our state grants?
Yes.
Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Vote. At least assign these guy.
Good to have them all.
These are here right now. For the record, the 711 Paul Mark. Senator Farley, Farley Goldblazer. And Governor.
Senator Joe Duhon. You think we should be sending one of these to our esteemed U.S. elders?
Yeah, we do. Or their honor.
We did?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Z.
I don't know. Execute, execute IMA, City of Pittsfield, regarding reconstruction of Dalton Vision Road. Terry?
Yes, we have before you an intermunicipal agreement with the City of Pittsfield. And again, it's requested by our engineers for the reconstruction project, which you know is being engineered right now and will actually, construction will take place probably starting in the late calendar year of '28 and the majority of it being completed, or at least almost completed in '29. 2029 still a ways off. But they, Fussell O'Neill is in need of this document, which I had hammered out by our KT legal staff, Tim Possison. And it went through Pittsfield's Ricardo Morales to be sure that the language was appropriate. And it basically, the entire project of the reconstruction of Dalton Vision Road is, is in the town of Dalton. But as you know, the Pittsfield city line runs right, right to the west of Dalton Vision Road. And interestingly, there is going to be, as part of the project, a sidewalk installed. And the engineers have determined that the most appropriate place to put the sidewalk is actually on the west side of the road, i.e. the Pittsfield side. And however, all the property for which this sidewalk will be on is in Dalton. But the rub is, is that when they're doing construction, there could be times where they need temporary easements or ability to actually encroach into Pittsfield. And so this agreement just creates a legal framework where both the municipalities, both Pittsfield and Dalton, essentially know the rules of the road, quote unquote, and it allows this to transpire in a methodical way in which, you know, hopefully there won't be any, any issues. Because it will be, you know, a tricky project where I think they will be, you know, probably on Pittsfield property at times. And it's going to be interesting because with that sidewalk on the Pittsfield side, one wonders if Pittsfield homeowners essentially will be hiding in their front yards, albeit in the town of Dalton, whether they're going to be maintaining it and shoveling it and such. I don't know. That would be something to be worked out a few years down the road from now. But this particular document is going to go before the Pittsfield City Council this coming Thursday night, according to Superintendent Morales. And after the council, I, he seems to think it will be approved without any issues. It will go in front of the mayor. And as you'll see when you look at the signature page there, the mayor must sign this document for it to become legally enforceable. So we thought we'd go ahead tonight because it seems, yep, cross your fingers that this will proceed smoothly on the Pittsfield side and then we can put that document in front of our engineers and boss and they'll be very happy with this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this document for submission to the City of Pittsfield.
Second. Okay. Most have been made in seconds. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in, Genesis Longley signing. Okay. Okay. Next round out, agenda is discussion regarding the site of new public safety building. Am I correct here?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Craig Wilber, Tony Ford Mountain View Chair. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Public Safety Facility Advisory Committee. So as part of my ongoing effort to improve the public safety and infrastructure in Dalton, the Public Safety Advisory Committee has been exploring the feasibility of locating a new police department within the town of Dalton. There has been many discussions about site suitability, what is allowed by law, by bylaw. And we, as the committee, have come to an impasse as far as site selection. So to ensure transparency and proper planning, we're looking for guidance from the Select Board this evening on several matters related to the zoning of that site, which we're talking about right now. We call it the First Street Site, but there are many frontages to the First Street Site. There's Field Street, there's Glenwood, there's High Street. So I want to be clear when I'm asking for these considerations that we're not talking about consuming the site itself. So First Street, it's green site, if you will, would not be altered in this way. So I understand there'll be some concerns. There'll be some community concerns that we may be doing things outside our purview or after being put through annual meeting. I do not come here tonight to try to decide what is right, what the bylaw is, but to ask the Select Board for several things. So what we're asking for is what steps would need to be taken in order to use the site here on the side of the senior center? Not in the front, on First or on Field, but literally behind us here for the purposes of a police department using a special permit as allowed by the zoning board appeals, either by right or by special permit. Two, does the presence of the senior center already being here establish some precedent for municipal use by right? Three, should we consider subdividing the senior center parcel from the remainder of the site, allowing for single-family host houses to be built? If we're putting out bids for property now and we're getting action, maybe we should be putting out those properties as buildable sites. But we should decide to do that and we should consider doing that as part of what we're doing with the senior center site, if that's accepted. Should the Select Board consider to do this? We'd be asking that you go before the ZBA and ask the following questions. Can the senior center site, known as First Street Site, specifically be used for a police department adjacent to the existing senior center? Not taking any frontage on First Street, Glenwood Ave., High Street, or Field Street? Would the Select Board consider going before the ZBA to get their determination on this site in order for us to move forward? So I would like some honest discussion, questions about where we should go with this.
I just want to be clear, Craig, when you say the site, you're talking about a building located this side of the senior center?
No. I'm adjacent one year. But I don't say. So literally what we're talking about the site, we're looking at the entrance to the senior center here. We'd be talking about a separate entrance, public entrance to the police department being on the upside of this wall, attached to the communications sidewalks that are here, basically creating a complex, if you will.
And that site would remain as this intact?
The parcel.
I mean, that's, that's what you're recommending, suggesting we investigate or?
The parcel is one parcel, so it's hard to define what we're talking about. We're not subdividing at this point, but we would consider that as a, as a good method to move forward. Protect the First Street Site, subdivide, and create a municipal wing in this area is what we've been looking for.
If I could speak.
Go ahead.
Being redundant, but obviously I was a member of this committee. I appreciate all of what we did or done and you're doing currently. We started in July of '24 and we took two important votes. And the first vote after viewing the current station was that we would look to create a station by bill, lease, renovate outside of the current facility. That was a unanimous vote by the committee. We investigated, I think, over dozen sites, if I'm not mistaken, Craig. Saw sites in the community. We visited them, talked to the owners. We pointed these sites and we eventually took on Brian Hughes as our consultant. When town meeting came and I spoke up at town meeting, I asked that we not vote because in my mind, and I've said this earlier to the committee, and I'm still of the opinion that most people were voting for not, not to have a police facility or public safety facility behind me. However, our committee looked at that as a potential site, as this is a potential site, to this side of the senior center. We also pointed other private properties in the community rather highly. Brian Hughes also pointed those properties. His pointing was different than our pointing. And as I've said earlier, we did not point these sides higher. In all due respect to the neighbor vote here, I respect the neighbors here. I understand the vote. And I said this to the Public Safety Facility meeting in August, that I would hope that they would be considerate of taking half the loaf in terms of keeping that site as it is. However, the concern I have in the community, I've heard, is cost. Costs are going to be a issue. Inflation's going up. Every day we wait, it's just going to add to that cost. This site here will not cost us a penny. I know the other sites would cost us, up in the neighborhood, close to a million dollars. So the consideration we have before our community is, do we want a private site with a million dollar cost plus? Or do we choose to do this site here? As I've, I've recommended and I think the committee, I can't speak for the committee, but the committee considered, and Brian Hughes now has considered. It's not an easy decision. There's no easy answer here. I was much more hopeful when this process began. I've talked to the administrator and Lee. Both Lee and Lennox collected a billion dollar earmark from the federal government. With the regime we have now, we have no hope of getting federal funds to even begin this process. But we need to secure a site. And from there, if our community can stand behind the site, we can move forward in terms of what we can afford, what we need as a building. But until we procure that site, we are really going nowhere to the detriment of this community. And I can only put in perspective as a teacher at Lacona. Kona had serious issues. And our communities invested close to a million dollars and then within five years, the building was gone and we built a new facility. I was of the opinion that if we spend money on the police facility as it is now, it would not be money well spent. And we still may have to spend money on the police facility now, given the issue. And we still may have to spend money on the police facility now, given the issues that we have there, ventilation, ADA, noncompliance. It's only going to get worse. We know we have to have a facility with at least two cells, if I'm not mistaken, Chief, Sally Court now, that was the other part. That is a dedicated space when people have to be brought to the station. So those are the bottom line requirements of a police facility. So I thank the committee for its work. I hope we can give you direction. I hope the ZBA would help us here. But again, getting to my point, I'm going to use the analogy of half the loaf. I would hope our taxpayers here would look at this as favorable. There are other communities that have this. As I've said, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Anyone else?
I guess I have to agree with Tony at some points that the cost of construction of anything from birdhouses to police stations is going up dramatically, again, thanks to the tariffs that have just recently, the last week or so, been invoked on copper, steel, and lumber, three critical components of building anything. So price is a very, very major factor. And the fact that this could be built on our own land, virtually no site costs. And the bigger parcel over here, then we all, the engineer, so highly of that parcel, he was ranked low above any other parcel that was ventured since because there are no site costs. All the other parcels that are being considered, not only is there site costs ranging in millions to two million, there are costs for acquisitions of property and in some cases, costs for demolition of existing buildings, which really adds up these days because of the hazardous waste factor. So I think the committee has bent over backwards to find a suitable, compromised location for our community. It's right out there. Of course, it can be tweaked, maybe move back a little bit, whatever, because the boundaries are, we don't know the diameter of the building yet.
Now, I'm not willing to give.
Okay, but it's going to be probably at least 40 by 40 anyway. It's a two-story building, you didn't mention it.
It is a two-story building.
Well, one story versus Sally Court.
Correct.
Which is a drive-in window to take in prisoners.
Well, it's a little more than a driver's lane.
Yeah, well, that's state law, right?
Yes.
So there's no arguments over that. So the committee, as Mr., as Craig has stated, is that their wit's end could come to the end of their road. They run out of options, literally. And they trouble this one and the compromise option that they think everyone can get behind and support because of the cost and the location, central location. And they're studying this. First of all, it's all been upside down and it wasn't really sure what it was looking at. So once I get this drift of this plan, I hope you all have a chance to see it, it really makes sense because it utilizes the existing parking lot for the senior center, so there's no parking lot cost. And then there's another entrance, so it's the existing entrance. Then there's another entrance of a Northfield Street, so it would be served the back of the building and the Sally Court. And there's cement walks all around that will go to the police station, senior center, and in between. So there's a lot to be said for this plan. I would hope that everyone gets behind it, at least give it a positive review or a positive thought and forget about the past or people who voted not, didn't want their labor. You get out your neck, point all day long. They didn't want a lot of things in this place. They voted against the housing project eight years ago after Bob and I worked on it for maybe eight years. And then they rescinded our vote, at the end of this town meeting vote, and they had to rescind it. Votes sometimes don't mean what they really mean. So Craig, some of your specific questions, maybe we can ask. I'm going to go ask about someone presented to the ZBA to ask for a special permit. I think that would be the duty of the incumbent town manager.
What I'd be looking for is guidance from the Select Board to know.
Also, I take two little these boxes. We'd have the cooperation of the town planner to prepare an application to seek a special permit.
And that's, I think, what at this point in time this boils down to is would the town in Dalton, whether that be through our new town manager, the Select Board, or through our town planner, go before the Select Board of the Facility Board of Appeals in December and ask of their opinion in this matter and if it's worthy of a special permit or at right. And in talking with Tony Doyle, I was told that they would be willing to hear that in December.
But that was back a couple of weeks ago. Now we're closer to December. And when they receive an application, they have to provide a certain amount of time to go to file all the various registered mail.
I don't believe this would be a formal application. This would be a discussion with the ZBA to engage them in this discussion. They believe that the site is by right allowed to be used for municipal use, applying all the bylaws for our town. I believe they will come to a decision based on that or at least give you an opinion based on that. And if your opinion is, yes, we believe it is warranted, then we have some site control and we have some ideas to complete our report. Keep in mind, we're not an action group. We're an advisory group. We're going to be giving to a report in the next 45 days with some options and this will be part of that. But we are not enacting anything at this point. I think we're asking for some guidance from our town leaders and from the ZBA if we're heading in the right direction.
So Craig, could you list your concerns or questions that we would then hopefully promote or pass on to Tony Doyle to answer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's five questions as part of my statement. I can read them out loud or if you take them in counsel and talk afterwards.
Are you having the questions that you listed at the beginning of the meeting?
Well, there's one other topic we should talk about. So there is one of a private property, I will leave it confidential at the moment, that was rated as a opportunity to review. It's a private property that has acquisition costs, but it also has the opportunity for a build-to-suit with a long-term lease. And I would encourage that our new town manager look at that possibility and whether that's legally feasible or if we can financially handle a long-term lease like that, that those options could give us a secondary idea without having to purchase or put out a great deal of money out for.
So I want to be clear, Craig, too, that if, when we submit these questions, I hope we do, Tony Doyle, then the committee will come back with recommendations in terms of a site selection?
We'll use the information from the Zoning Board if it's available by the time our report comes in. We'll include that as part of that and we will give our conclusions to what options are available.
And that would include the private site also?
It would if the town itself felt that they could engage in a long-term build-to-suit lease, which not every town has navigated successfully. It's an interesting purchase.
Craig, this private site, they still under consideration. Doesn't have a large site cost that would accompany any building.
That would have to be researched. Any site that we're looking at at this point is going to be very cursory and we're not going to have all the due diligence we would like to have, but we definitely have concerns and with all sites and we'll be critical of those as we evaluate. So the private site may not pan out, but we at least need to look at it. Otherwise, we don't have a site at this point. If we don't have a town site to use, currently we don't, we have no site control.
Is a private site on Main Street?
So I'm asking that Select Board work with our new town manager to get before the Zoning Board of Appeals for an opinion on the site. It's all we're looking for. And if the opinion is no, or if the special permit process yields a different impact, that it is what it is, the public has spoken, but I believe that the Zoning Board of Appeals does have some oversight in this matter.
So have you had any workings or interconnections with the town planner regarding this proposal or any proposal?
So.
We'd have to work real close with them to bring a proposal before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we would have to get the new town manager, Jerry would have to brief him extensively. And December comes quick this year. Their meetings are usually their first Tuesday of the month, which is the second, which is a Tuesday.
It's aggressive. Again, if we're looking to report on the project in December, we won't have a credible piece of that information. It'll be a big question.
Would we be more comfortable if we gave it an extra month or so to get this? I mean, take the pressure off to make sure we get it right.
Sure, I can do that. Again, we're going to try to give you a comprehensive report of what we've discovered and if the zoning board has some information to add to that that will help make a decision for the town, I'm all for postponing and doing that. But I would like the Zoning Board of Appeals to weigh in on this before we go any further with cost or spending money on the architect or really spending any more time talking about it, to be honest, until we know for certain that we can use the site.
Okay. So the building on Main Street, that be a one-story, correct?
I didn't even get to that level yet, but we wanted to discuss whether or not it should be considered a lease or a acquisition because that changes and some of how things are done if it's built. So that's hard thing to decide right now.
My question is, is a one-story cheaper to build than a two-story?
Um, no, going out's always more expensive than going up. More site, more foundation, more chances to hit bad dirt. So no, it's always good to go up. And we're talking about a two-story wood frame building in most cases or maybe a CMU building. This is a very modest-sized building and it's going to fit very nicely next to the senior center.
Any other questions? Chief, you want to lay in on?
I do, please. So I know you have all heard from me many, many times, but you can hear from me again. The current Dalton Police Department facility has deteriorated to a point that threatens the health, safety, and integrity of our operations. This is not simply an issue of comfort. It is an issue of compliance, safety, and human decency. Officers and staff are working in conditions that include mold growth, poor ventilation, elevated carbon dioxide, lack of heat. No matter what Jeff does, he is a wizard and I appreciate everything he does. He cranks the heat up, the sergeant's office, the officer's room, 85 degrees. My office is so cold, I have to wear a jacket, a blanket, and a space heater, same with Becky. Same with dispatch, same with our bathroom. So it's not working. We don't have heat. Sometimes we have hot water, it's great. Sometimes we don't. These are unacceptable conditions in any public building, let alone how the emergency personnel would work around the clock. The holding cells consistently fail inspection. They do not meet state or federal standards and could easily be deemed inhumane, exposing the town to both legal and ethical liability. Every detainee, we had one this weekend, I know people think we don't see a lot of crime in Dalton, we have arrests, we have to utilize those cells. Every detainee held within those walls represents a risk not to just their health, but to the town's reputation and legal standing. I beg those of you who have not been in for a tour to please come in into our police department. Beyond the immediate health concerns, building's deficient infrastructure has made it impossible for the department to meet modern operational requirements. The building's condition undermines morale, recruitment, retention. If you know anything about current law enforcement standards, hiring officers, retaining officers, people just don't want to work in police departments anymore. They don't want to work as police officers. So it's very difficult when you see Lennox, which I toured on Friday with Craig and pretty much cried all the way home because I was like, wow, this is what a normal police department looks like and we're in a basement with mold and carbon dioxide and rats and mice and leaks. It's disgusting. It's embarrassing. It's awful for us to even be in those conditions. And I know you've all heard it and I appreciate the time and the work that everyone, especially our building committee, has done. But it is time, the town has a legal and fiscal obligation to deal with this. We have kicked this can down the road for the 28 years I have been a police officer for the town of Dalton. It is time that we take action. I very much respect people's opinions and I get it, but I'm not really sure what the actual concerns are and I'm happy to address residents' concerns. We've been talking about meeting with them, so maybe we can relay some of their fears that they have. Maybe they're not quite truthful and we can maybe get to the bottom of some of that. I'm willing to do that. But I appreciate all the effort. I know this is not an easy topic and I know it's a lot, but I appreciate you guys, I appreciate your building, and I appreciate everyone's input here, I do. I just, I would love to hear what the actual concerns of us being right here would be. We will be a very similar-looking building to this. We're, we are not Brooklyn, New York. We are not driving 80 miles an hour down the street. Like, it's just not, not realistic. But thank you for giving me the opportunity, I do appreciate it.
Hey, Chief, should we be looking to move you out of there?
What's that?
Should we be looking to move you out?
There's nowhere to go. That's the problem. There's nowhere for us to go. We've looked and looked and looked, there's just nowhere.
It's unhealthy, we're going to have to do something.
It's been unhealthy for a long time. I don't, you know what I mean? It's not ideal for us to be there, but you know, I don't like, I don't know, I just think we need to take this seriously. And it's, again, it's not about being comfortable. This isn't, this isn't because we want shiny toys. This is, our health and safety is at risk. The people who come in our building, health and safety is at risk, our detainees. I am actually shocked with all the publicity our cells have gotten that we haven't had someone under arrest in that cell, talk to their lawyer about their civil rights being violated, being put in those cells. They are disgusting and inhumane. They're terrible. Thank you.
Right. So the reason you have no hot water in the town homes is because you have a 30-gallon residential hot water tank serving that entire building. I have a bigger tank in my house. Ryan, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Ryan Griffin, 33 Florence Street. I honestly do not intend to talk today, but this subject hits me right here. How many people in this room have actually toured the police station? I mean, I could. I would, if there are any questions in your mind as to whether or not a facility to deal with the police-related issues of this community are required versus what we have, take the time. My wife and I walked through there and you honestly would not believe the conditions that these people work in and the people that are brought into this facility have to deal with. I can understand the questions and the concerns that the neighbors might have on building adjacent to their homes. Okay? I don't know how to respond to that. That's the responsibility of the people who have both the authority and the responsibility to deal with, to help and save the people in the community. But I'll tell you, honest to God, I've never, I would not allow, if my son got arrested, I'd bring him to Pittsfield before I went to the Dalton Police Station. Honestly, God, it is horrific. It is close to criminal. She should be put in jail for letting people.
Please.
Go into that facility.
Why would we let it get this bad? I just don't understand why we let it get this bad. This is a bad building for the entire 28 years I've worked there. There's been multiple building committees and this is what happens. People don't want to support it, they don't want to spend the money, they don't want here, they don't want it there, and if nothing happens, we are desperate now.
Ryan, have support, please.
I've lived in Daltonburg, well, on and off for 40 years. I never realized that it was like this. And like you here, the majority of people in the community don't realize, don't have to know what these people who are protecting us have to do. It is, it's as close to criminal as the people. It is, it's as close to criminal as the people that they're chasing. It's bad. And if you ever, just go in and look at it, you can't begin to imagine how bad it is. Think back and be prepared for something that will absolutely freaking shock you. So whatever you guys can do, would certainly be the right thing to do.
Honestly, I will put a dog in our cells.
Can I just mention one last thing? Is that only the police department, it's also our nine-eleven call center. That nine-eleven call center is responsible for Dolphin, Windsor, and Hinsdale. So we all understand the importance of nine-eleven also, yes? Sorry.
Hi, I'm Mary Tierney. I do live on planet. I'm not here to start a fight. One of the things that I want to address, well, there's a few comments that I want to address this evening. One being that we've talked about the cost of this space versus the cost of another. The cost of another being, you know, a million-dollar price tag. However, as a towns person wanting to understand the cost of the whole scope of the project, I still don't feel like I've understood or heard the cost of any other option associated with it, just what the cost of the land is. And I believe when we voted in the spring, we had discussed the potential of seeing those. I do not have anything. I've called the police before, you guys have been to my home, you have helped me in situations. I almost had to call you last night because I had to drive my son to the ER. It's not anything, I would love for you all to have a new space. I just want to understand what the options are. And I keep feeling like when we're having this discussion, it's being heard as just this one point and one point. And I don't feel heard and understood in the fact that I would like to know what all of the costs are associated with the other options.
That won't happen. We're going to ask for it, definitely ask. We're going to have to have a choice.
So Turner, what are your thoughts on our charge to the select board? We are to give options we feel as committee we've uncovered that are appropriate to be brought before for consideration. So when we're talking about a new building, that is one option that will be proposed in a report. We will also have other options that will also address existing buildings. And there'll be prices associated with that. Right now, we are at a point where we're trying to decide what we're pricing, how we're pricing.
There's just been discussion, as I've only heard of this price publicly, we've only been told, certain costs associated with this property. And again, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not from here, I'm from Colorado, my husband is from here. I don't know the history of the twenty-eight years of this. I just know that this could be an option, but for me to feel like I'm heard and there's more people than just me that are saying this. And I understand there's more people even off of these streets. And I can, I can bring lists of names of people that have talked to me about the concern associated with the cost of this, not just the price of the land. And so I think everyone wants to hear that. And I just want that to be known, that it's not, a few years ago, the people that voted against it and, you know, the houses, I wasn't here for that. I wasn't a participant in it. I'm voting for right now, and I don't want the past to dictate how we represent the present.
Okay, just to be, to be clear, Mr. Wilber pointed out that construction costs are a thousand dollars a square foot. Well, that's an easy figure. If something's thirteen thousand square feet, that's thirteen million dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's the cost.
But there's also other costs associated with what?
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
And what he's pointing out is these locations have limited site costs. That means grading, drainage, et cetera, et cetera. And those levels are yet to be determined. So it's not like it's been kept in the dark. And we also feel the select board knows the strong pressure in the community to economize and come out with the lowest possible impact on the taxpayer. And that's what Mr. Wilber's going to do. He's going to give us a couple of choices, we're going to deliberate and make a recommendation to the people.
Yeah.
Everything will be straightforward.
I, I work in revenue for work, so I understand each, each dollar item counts, right? I'm in charge of revenue with my company. So you say this, I want to know every dollar associated with it, you know?
Okay. I'm not sure I know what that means. I'm expecting.
So in a report, you're going to give a cost estimate, a detailed cost estimate for each site. So A, how much it will be to develop it, how much drainage will cost, what the soft costs are, design, engineering, FFAE, all of those things will be broken down in a very clear way so that people will have to see how much the site costs, how much the building would cost, how much work on the individual costs. But that's coming in December, so we have gotten to that level.
Okay, and it would be for both options, as you mentioned?
It will be for multiple options that the committee has been looking at, what ones the select board chooses to go forward with, that that's what will be weighed in there. But they'll be getting a selection of either of those. New, partial.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ryan?
Just one question. I don't know how you guys feel, this build-to-suit is somewhat intriguing. I don't know its implications from the standpoint of how the town's construction, something like that, or how the cost would be spread out over what period of time. But I've got a pretty decent idea as to what the site is. And to me, it sounds intriguing.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Anyone else? Okay. We got next.
We will work with the town after this.
It is a momentary.
Okay, number thirteen. Discussion regarding appraisal of this county's course of parcels.
Okay. Yes. Here. All right, so last week I had mentioned that I had been approached by people regarding tax assessment for the parcel of Berkshire Concrete, something one hundred and seventy-five acres, and it totaled approximately forty-two thousand dollars inclusive of fire district taxes. And I was sort of taken aback when I heard that number. I went to our assessor, Lee, and we're currently being reassessed by a third party. And since then, Lee has indicated that indeed the residential parcel will incur additional taxes. However, the bigger issue was the mineral rights located below this land. We contacted our third-party assessor, and they gave me the land, the name of Landvest Appraising out in the Boston area, spoke with a Mr. Mark Savage last week. And basically, this is a specialized area where an appraiser would be knowledgeable in terms of geology, if it was to come to that point, in terms of appraising the mineral rights. He in turn gave me the name of Darwin Wertheision, whom I spoke with, and this is a Boston-based company. He is a certified member of mineral appraisers, knowledgeable in this field. And I asked him, how should we proceed? And he said, well, the simplest way to do that is to request an income statement from BCC. That income statement would serve as a basis in terms of appraisal, given the mineral rights below the land. There would be a tug-and-go back and forth in the sense that, well, it's, it's the land that should be appraised, not the mineral rights. However, the land value is predicated upon the mineral rights. In any event, he suggested that we request a BCC, that they give us their income statement, and we are more than, within our rights to do so, my understanding. And this should certainly be followed up if there's any question. But given that income statement, and I think at this juncture, there's some question whether they intend to mine one hundred and fifty thousand versus two hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of material, this would give us a basis in terms of a fair appraisal for tax purposes. So I just wanted to point that out. And I know our planning board would also be cognizant that any bond would be based upon their cubic yard removal over the course of how many years. So that's where it stands at this point. I haven't spoke to Lee, I meant to today, I missed, we missed each other, but I'll share this latest piece with Lee, and I don't know.
Keep in motion with Lee.
Should we, should we proceed in terms of requesting an income statement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sorry, Ryan.
That would pretty much wrap it up for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Pleasure. Okay, Clean Air Committee update, Tony.
Tierney, you want to start?
Well, the only thing I had to say is, well, a couple things. Unfortunately, we tried to make arrangements for the ability to get some samples from the BCC pit, probably predominantly one oh five sixteen, but I believe our consultants at Air Partners had also identified a couple of other areas that they would like to sample. But they were, they were here on a Saturday, and they put up the monitors, and they had hoped to also, at the same visit, collect these samples. But BCC indicated that they were not open for business on weekends, Saturday and Sunday. And so they said, why don't you try to reschedule on a weekday? Well, our consultants are from Needham by Boston, and they can't exactly just be here at the drop of a hat. So Tony Pegelulo and Dave Pugh volunteered to get these samples. They were, I believe, Tony, you can confirm this, that Francesca from Air Partners advised you on how to conduct the collection of these samples. And we tried to make arrangements, we had a date and time ready to go, and we went through Alex at KP to get to, you know, the BCC attorney. And unfortunately, they were pretty non-responsive about, you know, making this arrangement. And so today, we've been unable to effect these collection of samples, which is, again, we have a contract with Air Partners separate from the air monitoring. We have a separate contract for the SAM analysis, and they were going to analyze both BCC and collection of samples from people's domiciles here in the area, of course, of concern. So hopefully, we can, we can get that underway in some way, shape, or form. As you know, we're expecting to have two attorneys from KP out here next Wednesday night for the public hearing, and one of those is Alex, so maybe we can butthole him a bit more. I don't know whether the BCC people are planning on attending, that would be, and if Ethan might be there, I don't know. So anyways, that's the story on the sampling. And one other thing that I agreed with Tony and Nancy Hopper was that the town manager, and whether that's me or, you know, our new town manager, Eric Anderson, will be the point of contact in terms of when we have a complaint originating, you know, whatever kind of complaint. It's kind of up to the town manager to identify the department to which this complaint should be addressed, and then direct that department head to, you know, take whatever steps are necessary to, you know, get the complaint addressed.
Absolutely.
And so I think we reached that consensus that there has been a little of, you know, no, it's him, no, it's him, no, it's him. Now, going forward, I think we're going to try to, try to make that one person, and that would be the town manager directs the proper department to, you know, take care of the complaint and the issue at hand. I think that's all I have.
Good. Thank you.
Well, the holiday.
Pardon me?
Well, the federal holidays.
Yes, I know it is. That can say.
Okay, Tony.
Yeah, our committee met last week, and we're hopefully going to adopt a mission statement this coming week. It'll be very simple, pretty much to the effect of the safety and wellbeing of our, of our community in terms of maintaining our committee's work and oversight. As Terry said, we have not received permission to conduct SAM samples, although we were given permission by Mr. Patrico in the summer, so I hope that does come to pass. We're working on a grant with the state in terms of five additional purple air monitors. These would be plugged in, the air monitors, and now we're working, Richard's doing a great job here, in terms of looking where we would site them in the town, in our community. And so we have submitted the grant, we'll submit substantiating information, and it appears that, I spoke or emailed Bud this morning, and our parks have electric, electricity. So it may be that we will consider parks as, Greenwich Park or Chamberlain Park, as sites beyond the perimeter of BCC. Terry mentioned protocol procedures, hopefully we'll put some structure to that next time we meet. One of the monitors on Prospect Street, again, we believe it's related to, to the sun because these are solar, not plugged in. But I haven't heard, I meant to speak with Dave, I did not. If that's an issue, then hopefully Terry will contact Air Partners and we'll address that. But they're making more.
That's been a problem right here. We look, we look at, we look at the measurements of all of the different devices, and that one is, more often than not, is not aligned.
Okay, well, we'll have to recite it, I gather, so we'll take that up. That's fine. Let's see, our attorney is investigating the property history in terms of parcels that were deeded who knows how many decades ago in terms of this notion of grandfathering. They haven't presented any information or substantiation to indicate grandfathering, and hopefully our attorneys, the more they delve into that, will get us those answers. I think that's it for Clean Air. Oh, yes, one, one final thing. Received a memo today from Terry. As you know, our zoning enforcement officer issued the directive that it be restored, one oh five sixteen, and I inquired as to what the status was. I really didn't get an answer in terms of what they're doing or when they're going to do it, other than they are not going to appeal the directive from the zoning board of appeals. So they agreed. This is per attorney.
Yeah, it's funny, though, they're still mentioning the time period that needs to elapse, even though they're kind of, I don't quite understand.
Well, it appeared to me he wasn't going to appeal.
Right.
Okay.
But they're not rushing to do it.
Yeah. And finally, Board of Health, Nancy sent out a second letter. You recall, back in the spring, the Board of Health issued a cease and desist, which caused BCC to stop all activity. And in that letter, they were directed to provide a dust mitigation plan. It's been over six months now, no dust mitigation plan has been received. She asked them several weeks ago to please submit a dust mitigation plan in accordance with our third-party Berkshire Environmental report. So that has yet to be addressed. So there's a lot of questions yet that have yet to be addressed in this regard. And again, our committee will continue to work on this in terms of getting answers and moving ahead.
My question is, does the planning board know all this?
I know that Zach always asks to be informed when we have the meeting, the meetings and the notes, the takeaways, and I send it to Zach.
Okay.
And that's the best I can do. He's always invited, he came one time, but that's, that's all I can tell you.
Thank you.
Tony, are you enjoying what the format will be?
Thanks for Wednesday night.
Yonko will, will be in charge. I did make a recommendation, I think it's going to be a packed house.
Yeah.
And I think it's going to be limited to three-minute periods of the And I think it's going to be limited to three-minute periods of discussion with people yielding time. And I suggested to Yanko, given my experience with large groups of 800 to 1,000 with teachers' association, that people be issued a green card, a red card, or yellow card. Yellow card is questions. Yellow cards are pointed out first, they get an answer to the question or not. Red card is opposed to the motion, green card is for the motion. So we keep moving it with a balance, but how it will be formatted by Yanko, I, I, I can't speak beyond that. That was a recommendation.
A lot of times in large-scale meetings, they set up a podium at the base of the stage and a microphone there. And if someone wants to speak, they get lined or they walk down there and speak to the group. Instead of being all over the place, a lot of times people can't be heard.
Yeah.
Difficulties, and hard to get volunteers to run around all over the place with a microphone.
And they go beyond one meeting, too. And they go beyond one meeting, too.
Oh, yeah. I certainly won't make a decision that night.
But in terms of people getting the opportunity.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. Okay. Future agenda items. Oh, Terry.
No, no, I think that's-
Town Manager update. I'm trying to skip right over.
You can skip over.
No, you're not getting out of this.
I have a very good update.
Okay. I wanted to let the board know that the town attorney, Tim Sessom, has finished his review of the New Personnel Policies and Procedures Handbook. While many of the edits that he recommended are of a clarifying nature to the document, some require a little more thought and answers to questions that are posed by him. I expect to work with both Don and Eric to address as many of these as possible in our remaining time. This will be one of the items that I will be leaving with Eric for the complete finalization, and then your decision on the implementation date. Tim did what I consider to be a young man's job on this, considering how long it is. And I think he's embraced a few questions. Most of it is ready to go, but just he tidied it up with the, you know, improvements in language here and there. But, but anyways, finally got that back from him. And as you know, Don Fahey has resigned, and she will be taking a part-time position with the Dalton Housing Authority. Her final day is November 21st, but as with Sammy Albano, she'll be assisting on the onboarding of her replacement. And regarding that, we've advertised the position and are now setting up interviews for both later this week and well as next. As, on another HR front, you, as you may know, J.B. Heber resigned his position as Emergency Management Director on October 30th, and the Assistant EMD Morgan McDonough has offered to step up and handle the needed tasks in the interim until a new EMD can be hired. And as that, we appointed her tonight, asked the interim EMD, and we began advertising the full-time, pardon me, advertising the, the, yep, actual EMD position as of last week. That is a stipend position, but it's a critical position should you have a, some sort of an emergency or disaster in town. And believe me, there's a lot to it. So we'll be looking for people with the right qualifications and experience. On another subject, I wrote to Mass BOT District One Highway Director Francesca Hemming about the deplorable condition of the North Street Route 9 sidewalk running between Orchard Road and Tower Road that was brought to our attention by Dan Filio. The condition of this sidewalk makes it dangerous for pedestrians to be walking along this busy state highway. It has become even more important that this be addressed as more people are anxious to meet the complete circle of North Street, Main Street, and Orchard Road. And as you all know, Orchard Road was recently reconstructed with beautiful sidewalks over its entire length. Francesca has actually given me a reply today that they will be looking into it and will be letting us know their findings. So I feel kind of good that I got her to actually write me a reply. So cross her fingers on that one. Moving on to the stormwater project that was approved at the 9/17/25 special town meeting, our contractor, CEI, is making good progress on the MS4 plan. Using Berkshire Regional Planning Council's stormwater pipe and drawings as a starting point, CEI has completed their determination of piping connections for the eight miles of the stormwater lines included in this particular phase. In the process, CEI did identify information gaps in the BRPC drawings that could interfere with accurately determined several parameters required under our MS4 termant, specifically on the SBF, which is the Systems Vulnerability Backward. I'm going to say that 100 times. And the KJM, which is the Key Junction Manholes and the catchment areas, are needed to accurately guide the wetfall, outfall testing that will be planned for this coming spring. CEI has advised addressing these gaps now, remaining within the existing $94,000 appropriation and budget. This would allow them to verify the key piping connections and avoid the future expense of recalculating parameters and performing unnecessary outfall testing. CEI's confirmed is well-founded, and that proposed adjustment is reasonable. We therefore recommend this plan if the board has no objection. Finally, we are in the planning stages of scheduling a joint meeting of the Select Board and Dalton Water Commissioners to discuss the possibility of metering for all users of water in town. This is becoming more critical as the town is negotiating with Pittsfield for a new interminable agreement for processing our wastewater, which may eventually cause rates to double. It is felt that now is the time to move to a system to build users of both water and wastewater based on actual usage and not a flat fee. Metering would be fair and encourage users to reduce their consumption of this particular resource. So I believe that meeting may be during the first week of December. You know, Eric Anderson will be taking my place by then, and, you know, I, I hope that somehow progress can be made on that particular front. So that's, that's all I have in this final wrap-up.
Your question, Terry. Well, thank you, Terry.
Hey. Good job, Terry.
Future agenda items, then?
I do, Bob. I know Terry sent out a survey to chairs of various departments and towns regarding our town website, which many people believe it's due for an update in terms of a more user-friendly website. And I know with the public safety facility and, and not so much public safety facility, Clean Air Committee, the notion of record-keeping. I inquired with Heather, our town clerk, about records, and the basement where the police facility is, it's very moldy, and many times people have to go there for records. Bottom line is, I'm suggesting that our town look into digitalization of our records to some extent. Heather's seen on that. I spoke with Terry about this, too. I've done some investigation. The state has a webinar, and one as municipal directed me to a webinar, and there's individuals who may assist us here in terms of coming and speaking after evaluating what we want or what we have. So I'm looking into that, so to speak, or investigating that in terms of keeping town records.
Can I suggest to talk to Todd a little bit?
Okay.
He did a lot of work on this with the town.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Todd. All right.
Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay? Items not anticipated, $48 before the meeting, any?
I just have one. I don't know if it's more for this or the next. The chief is still here, too. Great. I had emailed everybody on the board regarding e-bikes, and I don't know, seeing youngsters, young people around town.
Oh, yeah.
It's rather frightening. I think we may all have a horror story. I shared one with, Terry shared one with me, and I own an e-bike, and I can tell you there's a level one, level two. There's, beyond that is, they don't turn at level three, but there's a level three. Level threes are easy to determine because if someone's on that e-bike without pedaling, that's a level three bike. You don't have to pedal, you can go up to speeds of 30 miles an hour. And there's children literally riding these bikes in traffic lanes, not abiding by the regulations, some committed, some not. I don't know if, if the state is, is ahead of this curve, but we may want to be ahead of this curve in terms of possibly a bylaw coming up this spring because there's been two injuries I've, I've heard of, one to the, one to the bike and one to a vehicle driver. So, Chief, I don't know if you want to speak to it anymore? You sent out a memorandum in terms of guidance?
I'll be on the hot seat tonight. So we've been inundated with e-bike complaints all summer. We were a little proactive. We did some social media advisories, kind of explaining. The difficulty we have is the kids that are riding these bikes don't have a driver's license. They don't have driver's education, so they don't understand you have to stop for red lights, you have to stop for stop signs, you have to do these things. And Sergeant Miller's gone now, but he's been amazing, going out and trying to talk to these kids and saying, hey, you have to stop because if you don't, you know, we've had two e-bike crashes where a kid got hit by a car, we had an adult get hit by a car as well. No serious injuries, thankfully, but we had them take off on police two weeks ago, right down the middle of the road in the dark. So obviously, we didn't chase them because it's just not worth the risk on that. So it's been a lot, you know, when Sergeant Miller went and did speak to a kid on a bike, the parent came and was very upset at this, the sergeant talked to his kid. So we're trying really hard, but we need parents to parent and really talk to their kids about the safety of what they're doing. I mean, it's crazy to me that a 12-year-old riding e-bike from Hinsdale all the way to Dalton. That's, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm just not that type of a parent, but that's what we're seeing. They're driving erratically, but we're very limited on what we can enforce, and we understand the frustration of our residents. We're just as frustrated. You know, the difficulty is they can be operated on the road in the bike, like in the breakdown lane, designated bike lanes, and they are prohibited on sidewalks. So when they're riding on the sidewalk, we can tell them, cut it out. There's not a lot of enforcement issues because options, but they don't have a driver's license. The issue is, and I'm sure we've all can talk about the stories of these bikes going over 20 miles an hour, proving it. So we're having a little difficulty seeing that because most of them are class one, class two, which is 20 miles an hour, less than 20 miles an hour. They have to have a helmet if they're 17 or under age 17. So I'm happy to send that advisory out to the whole board. I did send it to Tony. We talked about it. Or Terry, if it's okay, I can send it to you, and you can forward it along. Just so you can take a peek at it, our Mass Chiefs Council had sent this to us because all the communities are dealing with this. So we are certainly not alone in our frustration, so.
May I recommend that we, in terms of being proactive, the winter season's coming, but in terms of spring, asking our attorney to draft some sort of bylaw to bring it to the attention of everybody in our community?
Is that, I mean, this was not on the agenda.
No, 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 no.
Put this on next.
Not on the agenda and take a vote.
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Can I ask a question? Would it be possible to do a, an assembly at the high school?
I do, I have a meeting with Central Berkshire.
Well, I mean, that-
I may, I'm going to ask them to, to help us here. Yeah, I need with the superintendent on Wednesday. I'll ask.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, remarks of the Select Board.
Yeah, just, I would like your proposal for a bylaw, Terry. If children don't listen to their parents, why would you think they would listen to a bylaw?
Well, their parents-
I know I would.
Okay. Hey? It's just-
Time to mention, guys.
Okay.
I got some. No, sorry. Wait. I just wanted to recognize the Dalton Police Department put out a call to action for the food pantry, and they received over 1,000 pounds of low food for the food pantry and a couple hundred dollars.
Beautiful.
Beautiful, right?
I'd just like to say tomorrow's Veterans Day, and anybody that's ever put on that uniform, you have my utmost respect, and thank you very much because we live because of what you do. Thank you. Anyone else? It's a list of announcements. It's raining season again, and watch out for the snow. Please don't blow or rake leaves into the streets or adjacent water bodies. The other ways such as leaves, leech, nutrients into the stormwater mouth will contribute to water pollution. Don't forget, you can bring your leaves to transfer section for composting. You can also help the DPW staff by preventing flooding by keeping any storm drains for your leaves. The all police department is reminding citizens of Dalton of winter parking bans, which goes into effect on November 15th, 2025, through April 15th, 2026, between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. During this time, there'll be no parking on the streets. Dalton Border Health is looking for one more board member. The board meets second Tuesday of each month at 5:30 p.m. Please contact at Dalton Border Health at 684-6111, extension 305, if interested. The ADA Committee and the Conservation Commission are also looking for volunteers. Please visit the town website for more information. The town of Dalton currently has the following employment opportunities: town treasurer, emergency manager director, emergency on-call operator, and DPW motor equipment operator. Please visit the town website or contact the town managers office for more information. Dalton's official meeting postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. The next regular meeting of the Dalton Select Board is scheduled to take place on Monday, November 24th, 2025, 7 p.m. at the Dalton Senior Center, with an option for remote participation. With that, call for adjournment.
Adjournment, I move that we adjourn.
Second. Most have been making second. Paul and Taylor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, everybody. Good night, Paul.
Everyone, put your chairs back when you were-